Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 5th, 2021 Winter School Committee meeting and hearing for the 2021-2022 school budget. The meeting and the budget hearing will be held both live and through Zoom teleconference. Some members of the school committee will be present in room 142 of the Winter High School at 400 Main Street here in Winthrop, while others will be participating remotely. The regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be conducted immediately following the budget hearing. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Present.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. Ms. Hayes, could you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Okay, we're going to be opening the public hearing for the 2021-2022 budget. Mr. Matucci, as chairman of the budget subcommittee, can you present your recommendation for the initial 2021-2022 school budget?
Sure, just picking up on last year, we're going to give you the last year's budget number, which was 22,242,750. This year, the proposed budget is 23,469,695. It's a difference of 1,269,945. This is a very fluid number. It's a preliminary number, but it's a number that the superintendent or staff came up with in a way that the last few years I've been up on the committee for a while. But the way that they come up with this number is really very detailed and the time they put into these numbers. And I just, it's impressive to me to see the time that goes in to them developing this budget. So again, this is preliminary. This number needs to be voted on, to go into the paper. We have a budget timeline that we need to keep to according to the town chatter, and this is part of it, so we'll be looking for a vote on that number.
Does anyone from the school committee wish to be heard on the initial presentation of the budget? Again, it's a preliminary number that needs to go back to the town of Winthrop, the council, and discuss the budget as to how they set it. Ms. Swope?
Wait, I have a question. I don't know whether it goes to Gus or Lisa or whomever, but the additional 1.2 million, as I looked over the budget, it's mostly because of the increases in salaries. Would that be an accurate reflection of that increase in the budget?
I see exactly what Lisa picked up.
Yeah, definitely is a reflection of the increase in the budget, the 2.5% contractual increases for next school year, as well as things such as steps in lanes. So we've talked about that before. Each teacher, if they're not already at the top step, would move up a step. And if an additional degree status or credits towards your next degree were awarded, it's reflective of that as well. Some other increases that you see in here outside of just salary, step in lane would be general contractual contracts. So there's any increases in such things as our copier lease that we have or other technology plans that we have, so any three-year contracts or contracts that are running out, there's slight increases in each one of those. It's also reflective of a change in the telephone system and the billing for that telephone system. As you know, we have finally new and updated telephones that connect across the school district, school to school, as well as to all-town offices without fail. So every telephone is now in solid working condition, so there's somewhat of an increase there. There's also the third year of the contract, there was a slight increase in cost reimbursement for teachers, so that's reflected in this contract. And some other increases, minimal increases, that are positions that we put in place this year due to COVID. And hopefully, we'll be receiving some more relief money to offset those, and that's why this is a preliminary budget. So we may be able to back some of that out. And positions that I'm speaking of are such things like the certified nursing assistance for the COVID medical waiting rooms for our students, and the, some of the in-school monitors that we've used to help our students in the hallways and in classrooms, and some ESP support that we also have in there. And it is also reflective of, I'm sorry, it's not reflective of some potential changes as we finish out this school year. We'll be able to look at if there are positions that we use this year that we don't need, we can certainly adjust the budget for that prior to the final budget going to the town council. And we're also working on some new needs that have come to the district in terms of some of our students with special needs, some higher enrollment in our students with autism program. So we're working on the staffing for that. Hopefully, we do not need to add a teacher, but if we do due to the ratios allowed in those classrooms, we may have to also add for that. But it's pretty much step in lane and salary increases, and then some of the additional positions that we have had to add this year, but not all.
One more question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Swope.
I, of the 1.2, what, is there any portion of that that you anticipate being paid for out of a COVID budget? Or is that after what we've gotten, after monies that we have received because of COVID?
So right now, this is the positions that we have had to put in place because of COVID. Not every position is, was covered by SR money. New monies are coming towards school districts and communities. So we put in there what we know from this year to next year, and when that money comes in, if and when it is made known to us, that's when we'll be able to make the adjustments. We hope to be able to get that, you know, within the next month or two to figure out how to adjust the budget. Thank you.
Is there any more comment or question from the school committee?
I guess just one question.
Yes.
In regard to adding additional positions or support for like post-COVID or additional adjustment council support and the like, are you thinking that that would be COVID support fund, or are we going to look at that as we sort of apply the budget?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great question. So, you know, in working with-
Good question, because we can't really hear, really hear Julie.
So Julie's question was, reflected in this budget, are there new positions to help sort of mitigate the impacts of COVID-19? And I, and I think Julie, to just, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but around the social emotional well-being of our students and, you know, the journey that we're about to take in, in recovery. So coming back to school today was amazing, and all, having all students in school is definitely an uplift. But the work, the deep work is going to continue from today throughout, in my estimation, as a, you know, somewhat seasoned now educator of 33 years is, this is not something that's going to right-size everything. And we are deeply invested in working with outside agencies as well as, you know, the Department of Education in identifying the needs of the school district and what positions we need to put in place to really grab a hold of what's happened over the past year and to bring us forward. And I never want to say back to normal, because at this point, I don't even know what normal is or was. What I do know is we're going to have a lot of students and staff members who are going to need time and support, whether it's academic support, social emotional support, mental health support. And, and those things are going to be needed for several years. So what we know from the Department of Education is that there is federal money coming to school districts across the Commonwealth that is going to help offset those costs. So we are, not in the beginning, I would say we are in the end in restarting again for, you know, the planning for next school year as to what that might look like. I think the next couple of months for us is critical in terms of really understanding the impact on our students and, and not just guessing at what it is. We are mindful that the social emotional support is going to warrant some more adjustment counselors and types of support for kids that's not academic. And we also know that academically, there are going to be some gaps in learning from our students for sure. We don't pretend to fix that. There is no one-year fix for that, I can assure you of that, similar to the mental health impact on our students. So we're planning long-term for that, and you do not see those new positions in this particular budget because of the awareness of the money that is coming in and the timeline that you, you would use that money in. The state dictates that you have X amount of dollars that need to be used in this fiscal year, and then we believe there's more money coming that will be able to be used over a period of two years to three years. So we're in the process of designing that, that strategy so that our school budget, which has remained pretty much the same for the last, you know, 10 years, to be honest, it's salaries, materials, and supplies for the most part. So these additional funds will certainly help us take the next step. So we have a whole separate strategy for that, and you need to have that strategy because in order to use that money, you have to prove to the Department of Education that you are meeting the categories in which the funding comes forth. So we have a whole group of people working on a long-term strategic plan for that. It is very similar to, you know, planning for COVID. We're not really sure exactly what we're going to need, and we want to make sure that as we decide that we base that on the data that our children give us as, as they return to us. We're, we're going to be in a honeymoon phase for the next few weeks, that's for sure. But we do have plans to assess our students and to get that feedback back to the right subgroups of people so that when we do open up again in the summer, as well as in the fall, that we're able to have those things in place with a completely separate funding source. So that's a big boost for our budgets. It is mountainous in terms of the amount of work that the staff here will have to put in in order to get those, those strategic plans in place with goals and benchmarks, you know, to assist our students. But with any strategic plan, you first have to gather the data, which will be evaluating our staff and getting feedback from, from our, our staff members as to how our students are doing. So that is the plan for additional social emotional and academic support as well. And that includes the summer, we believe that there's some summer money coming. We don't know the details yet, but as soon as we know, we'll tell you.
Okay, moving on to the next portion of this hearing. The public has an opportunity to comment regarding this budget number. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard regarding the 2021-2022 budget amount requested? Patty, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to be heard as the budget request for 2021-2022?
No, we do not. Oh, yes, we do.
Ms. Howard, since I haven't seen any, oh, Ms. Howard isn't there. Maybe I can ask Mr. Matucci. Where we, I haven't seen any numbers. Can you tell me if Chapter 70 monies will be decreased next year if we continue to have some kids that are fully remote versus the kids that are going back full-time?
Hi, Ms. Chavez, sorry, I had a step on us. Having a coughing fit, so allergy season has got me good.
No, I, I was just asking Mr. Matucci, do you know if Chapter 70's money is going to be affected at all next year if you still have kids that are going fully remote versus the kids that are going to be back full-time?
Yeah, so, so Chapter 70, you know, is a reimbursement program, as you know. So the money coming in next year through Chapter 70 will be for the students that we have this year. So students, whether they're hybrid or fully remote or now full in person, as long as they're enrolled in the Winter Public Schools, we receive the Chapter 70 funds regardless of the learning model that they're in. You know, the, the State Department of Education's new education policy has eliminated the hybrid learning model for schools now, and it is their statement that there will be no remote learning as of September. So we believe that all students will be required to be full in person with no option for fully remote in September. However, throughout the last 13 months, things have changed on a dime, and so as of right now, that's the way it appears. So Chapter 70 will come in for any kid who's enrolled, any student who's enrolled in the Winter Public Schools, remote or full in person. But I believe will be 100% full in person without that option for full remote next year.
Thank you. And the other thing is, you, you just kind of mentioned casually spent education, and you did mention autism. What about the outplacement kids? Do you foresee them costing us more money on more kids or less kids going?
Yeah, so most, you know, certainly Office OSD, which is the Operational Service Division for the state of Massachusetts, they set the out-of-district rates at collaborative, not at collaboratives, but at private special education schools, day schools, and residential schools. Each year, they put something out in, on or around March 1st, I'm sorry, April 1st, that talks about an anticipated increase. So the Office themselves has to approve any increase that any private special education school, day or residential, is suggesting for, for their tuition for the following school year. And it helps special ed directors and superintendents perceive what their budget will be. So we have had, and, and so that rate, before it comes out, they typically, you typically estimate it's about between 2 and 2.5% of an increase. That doesn't mean everybody's going to raise to 2 to 2.5%, but it allows you to sort of estimate where you are going to be, similar to the collaborative rates that get set by the collaborative group every year, and you look at a 2 to 2.5% because budgets are usually due before people actually finalize those plans. Involved in that is also a larger picture of program reconstruction. So any special ed school that's going to be doing something major, the school districts are notified typically prior to April 1st that that school may increase more than 2.5%. For instance, a school that goes from $75,000 to, you know, $120,000 because they expanded and had to add a lot, a lot of new staff. So we take all those into consideration when we're setting the out-of-district line. This year, we have had quite a few students move in with collaborative tuitions. So collaborative tuitions follow children on the day they move. So if a child lives in Chelsea and is attending Shore for $45,000 a year, that's the price, if they move to Winthrop, that tuition follows them, and Winthrop starts to pay that tuition immediately upon that child becoming a public, Winter Public School student. It's a little bit different with private special ed day schools. After April 1st, if a student were to move to Winthrop from a private special ed day or residential, the sending district owns that tuition for the following year, and that's a budgetary move. That, that is helpful for school districts. So I anticipate our number being higher next year because we've had a few collaborative students move in this year, and we've also had a handful, and I want to say it is three in total, of day school students that moved here to Winthrop prior to April 1st. And what that means is their sending community where they are will pay the tuition till the end of the school year, and then Winthrop Public Schools will assume that tuition in the following school year. So that breakdown that was provided to me, and it's, as we know, special education is a, is a moving target and is really difficult to anticipate based on movings, but there are a lot of things you can anticipate. So our tuition line that's set right now is reflective of what we know and the anticipated to, I think we did 2.25% Karen, as a, as a percentage rate. And I don't believe any of the schools that we have students attending have a program reconstruction cost for the upcoming school year, which is good.
Just one more thing. On transportation, do you think you're going to have an increase because of the need for more than like one bus for a hockey team or football team? I mean, I think in the past, you could probably get away with one or two buses, and now you might need three?
So yes and no. So yes, in that, depending upon what the transportation, how the transportation guidance shifts, they've just shifted it again to allow more students on one bus with the distancing requirements, so they've lessened the distancing so you can fit more students on. We also, last year, I believe, if my ears have started to flow together, we were, we purchased with, I believe, MSBA, additional MSBA funds, so it might have been a year and a half ago, I, I lose it.
That was last year.
Okay, good. I feel like one, this, every day is last year.
Yep, that was last year.
So we purchased an additional van, one or two?
Two.
Small vans, and, and by state law, you can only have a 14-passenger bus with 12 students and two coaches. So that should alleviate some of our smaller teams and alleviate us from us having to get a large bus, you know, a $600 a ride passenger bus. So, but the distancing itself is going to drive how many vehicles we need to have for students to get to games. We also put together through the policy, athletic policy subcommittee meeting, an approval of the school committee last year, I think, a, a policy in place that allows parents to drive their students and, and students to drive each other but not other students to and from games should they choose to do that. And that is a process that requires signage and approval and notification from parents to the athletic director and principal prior to doing that. That would be a little bit of a cost savings as well. But if the distancing stays the same, the price will be different than it was the year before. That I can tell you, but hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll, there'll be more guidance coming out that will lessen the distance and allow us to put more students on the vehicles.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any further public comments or questions for the budget right now, Patty?
Uh, no, there are no hands out.
Okay, Mr. Matucci, I, I believe that the vote to accept that budget figure was coming at the end for new business, but where all this information has come to us now, I'd ask that we take it out of order, and I'll entertain a motion for you, Mr. Matucci, as the chairman, to present that budget figure in a full of emotion.
So I make a motion to the vote to accept, approve the 23,459,695 budget to present to the town and to put in the paper publication.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Patty, for the record.
Yes, Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
I have to stand.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we'll be closing out the budget hearing. Can I get a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
Motion to close.
Mr. Matucci makes a motion to close, can I have a second to close out the budget hearing?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capabianco. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please, to close out and adjourn the hearing?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, we'll now begin the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of April 5th, 2021. Patty, will you please call the roll? I don't know why we'll call the roll twice, but it's in the agenda.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Present.
Ms. Powell?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. Okay, we're at the portion of the meeting for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
No, no public comment at the moment.
Okay, we'll close out public comment, move on to delegates and visitors. I don't believe we have any this evening. We have two sets of minutes to be approved this evening, March 15th, 2021, and March 22nd, 2021. I'll take them separately. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2021?
No move.
Motion by President Boncory, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the minutes of March 15th, 2021? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We now have the March 22nd, 2021 minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes as written.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Capabianco.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the minutes of March 22nd, 2021? Hearing no discussion. Patty, can I get a roll call vote for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to financial and business procedures, we have warrant SBW 21-17, the amount of $147,056.66. Can I get a motion for that amount? Motion by Ms. Barry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on SB 21-17, the amount of $147,56.66? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call record vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next financial proceeding is a payroll warrant SBW 21-18, the amount of I'll entertain a motion for that amount.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, a second by Ms. Powell?
Yes.
On SBW 21-18, the payroll amount of $782,332.72. Hearing none. Patty, can we get a roll call vote for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
I'm standing.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Standing.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Stand. Okay, the next item under financial and business is a budget transfer request of Is there a motion for that budget transfer in that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion on that budget transfer request? Seeing none. Patty, can we get a roll call vote for the record, please?
Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next, we're moving on to buildings and grounds. We have a Winter Youth Lacrosse game on the agenda. Does someone want to bring us through that? Ms. Howard or Ms. Hayes?
I can do that. Winter Youth Lacrosse is asking to use the field March, I'm sorry, April now, April 11th for youth lacrosse games. They have, I believe, three, Patty, if not four, games in one day. Presently, with COVID, the rental of facilities, in-school facilities, as well as our outdoor spaces, has been on hold for obvious reasons. With the lifting of many of the outdoor gathering rules and certainly sticking with all of the state guidelines as well as the school guidelines, we have some flexibility now, given the, the size of our outdoor space and given the needs of our, our students, our Winter Youth Lacrosse, as well as many other Winter Youth sport programs. Uh and given the needs of our our students, our Winter Youth Lacrosse, as well as many other Winter Youth sports programs. Um are certainly uh, you know, gathered with children that we have in school every day. Um so we uh after speaking with the athletic director and um the principal uh of the building of of the high school. Uh we believe that we let that opportunity begin again uh in a small form on the outside. Uh we don't feel as though we're quite ready uh to do anything inside our buildings with any of our halls uh just yet. Uh given the protocols that we have in place and the fact that we've been full in-person learning for uh about fourteen hours now. Uh certainly, we can revisit that, uh however, um we've looked over our contract and how we uh provide usage and rental of the field. And we would uh like to recommend a temporary uh change to that um current contract in which. Uh we would work with a with the youth sports request when they have a request uh to allow them between April eleventh, uh sorry, April fifth, which is today, and the last day of school. To ask to use the field uh for youth, Winter Youth Sports, um and we have a, what did I title it?
Temporary access to Miller Field for Youth Sports.
A temporary access to Miller Field for Winter Youth Sports, uh amended contract in which the youth sports teams would partner with us uh in terms of staffing. They would uh certainly the uh part of the custodial contract here in Winthrop is when that field is in use, custodians are contractually um given uh the the work. That takes place to keep the field, uh the bathrooms, which we now have, uh clean and and up to date, and take care of the the trash and the barrels and. The locking and unlocking of the gate and the anything that needs to be done uh inside that field, so that would stay. Uh we would still need to have a Winter Public Schools Field Administrator, and we have a handful of people that are qualified to do that onsite. To ensure that all the protocols that uh we have in place are followed. Anyone who would be uh approved to rent it would have a fairly strict um contract that they would have to follow surrounding COVID protocols. Um capacity on the field, uh and all which would be in line with the MIAA rules that are currently in place, so no deviation from. How the public school uses the field for athletics. Um and if there was a youth team that uh could do that and would bring their own staffing, uh we certainly will give them the guidance. As to what they need to do and the protocols that they would follow. Uh and we would uh not be charging a field use for this temporary timeframe. Um so the field use fee Patty, I think, is four hundred?
Yes.
Is four hundred dollars per day, um and during this temporary time, we would not be charging that. Uh but it should be noted that there may be occasions at Winter Youth Athletics, whichever team it was, whether it was soccer or lacrosse or whomever it was. Um if we can't field, if we can't cover the field administration portion of it, meaning we don't have a Winter Public Schools trained field administrator to be onsite. We may not be able to approve a date uh for those, and all of that goes through the same process it always has gone through, which is. Application to the athletic director, and then he figures out if we have the staff uh available to do it, and then he approves the dates. And then we work with the uh requester to fill out the contract, and in this case, from now through June, it would be a a modified contract, which. Uh is a little bit easier for the youth teams to to be able to fund, they would be paying for the administrative hourly fee and the custodial fee. Uh and as long as they can go bring the staff to do the other items on the contract that need to be done for contact tracing, et cetera. Um we would not charge them for that, and uh they would bring their own volunteer staff on. Again, this is temporary, um I think the policy subcommittee in the future can can revisit it. Uh but uh I would recommend that that we allow uh the process at least to be available. For Winter Youth Sports Teams uh for their uh opportunity, should they.
I agree, I think it's um a great idea to have these kids back in the fields. And this temporary access uh policy, I think, we need to, you know, talk about, I think it's perfect, but we still have to make sure that we're okay with it. Um the other thing is, um we need to make sure is that the all financial obligations are taken care of. Prior to approving any. Field use, so is any outstanding balances from the previous year or whatever, we need to make sure those are collected. So um I I would ask if what the uh Lacrosse is up to date?
So uh. Yeah, so Patty, um I I believe that the Winter uh the request, the only request we have right now is Winter Youth Lacrosse. Um and I believe they are up to date um with any any payments, correct?
Yes, and they they have um submitted payment for this request, so they have prepaid the custodial fees and the site administer fees for this request.
Can uh I entertain a motion uh on that matter, Mr. Matucci or Ms. Barry? Barry, go ahead, make your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of the field for Winter.
Second.
Uh under the terms uh that we just described, which.
Yes, yep.
Uh waiving the uh actual field use fee and only requiring the administrative fee and the custodial fee. Is that correct?
So uh correct, and also um there is in this temporary access contract adherence to the signed contract, the COVID nineteen protocols. Um and a whole bunch of other stuff about how people enter the field, how many people can come in, um and what paperwork needs to be um submitted. At the end, which includes contact tracing paperwork, um and for them to provide uh their own staff to be able to do the things that we would otherwise be. Charging them for, such as um other admini- other staff members on the field for crowd control, which is not typically a problem, but they. Teach people to stay in the stands following the COVID protocols, they redirect people. Um and one thing that's important when you have multiple games going on, so one one group uh would run a U twelve, U fourteen, U sixteen. Uh that there's a, we have a process in place so that the U twelves are on the field and playing, and those bystanders and watchers are there. And then that gets cleared out before the U fourteens come in, so there's a uh there's direction on on how to do that. And so as long as all of those protocols are followed, um the subsequent dates will be approved. If the protocols are not followed, certainly um the the athletic director uh would have the right to to not allow any future dates uh to be. Followed, and if that's the case, they would receive a refund for any fees that they had paid. So they would be paying the custodial fee and the field administrative fee. There's also no no additional, there's no fringe right now, so there's no use of the um of the press box, there's no audio. Uh or anything like that uh at this time, because that is our staff that has to man those those uh those items, so. But there will be access to the bathrooms in the new field house, um and that's part of the custodial uh piece. And there would need to be somebody to monitor how many people go into that bathroom at once. And which is a direct snapshot of what happens every day in school, so uh that's it.
I I just want to make sure I have the motion correct, that the motion is to waive just the field use fee. And the administrative and custodial fees remain, so it's not a cost to the town. Uh and that uh all the protocols and rules and regulations of the of the school department are followed. Uh as 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 they are now or as they are updated.
Correct, and those will be provided.
Is that the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
I have a question, if I may, through the chairman?
Yes, I was just gonna say, we're we're on a second hour session.
It's sorry, didn't mean to jump your gun. Um I are they? We don't need to have any um particulars on who would be on the field, they would be responsible for the number of spectators, so if it were a visiting team. We're not saying that the visitor team, visiting team can't come, that's up to the teams themselves, correct?
Um actually, there's a uh in the in the revised, in the COVID protocols. And in the MIAA, we're following the schools' MIAA protocols in terms of numbers and what's been agreed upon by the school department for in-school games. So I I can give you an exact um reflection of what that will be. So an individual must uh sign in for the contact tracing with the public schools, we'll provide that paperwork. And with the Winthrop players, so uh Winter Youth Lacrosse, their families would have four household members per player. And visiting teams would be allowed to have two household members per away player, without exception. And we took, we were mindful of the fact that youth lacrosse, uh we don't have twelve-year-olds driving themselves from Gloucester to Winthrop. Uh so the families that are driving, and these are, these are little kids, so uh field presence for parents is is somewhat important, whether it's an anxious child or. Uh just needing to have a parent there for a whole host of other reasons. Uh we felt strongly that the away team should be able to bring in members, but we also didn't want to overwhelm uh any staff. Uh or any any support or jeopardize any of the COVID protocols, we did four household members of Winter players and two household members of an away player. The responsibility to track that and to approve that falls upon the volunteers of the youth. And we will provide them with the rules and kind of the setup to do that, what they need to follow and who has to sign in and. Uh where they have to distribute, you know, bring that paperwork at the end, uh but uh they're responsible to make sure they don't exceed that. And and, you know, they follow those rules.
Do we end up being responsible for the contact tracing if there's a need?
I I think we would be responsible for that if we're taking the information uh so that we can track.
Yeah, I I would say that, you know, if if there was a a case of COVID, I know that the Lacrosse Organization, which is um. Mass Bay Youth Lacrosse, I believe, they have their own system that they will do that. Uh because the the students are Winter Public School students, um I don't think we would shy away from being a part of that system. But the Lacrosse Organization itself controls any, just like in youth hockey, if there's an outbreak at a at a rink, it's a youth hockey association that would. Uh notify those parents. Uh however, for us to to have that same knowledge, because, you know, the Winter Public Schools is not a part of Winter Youth Lacrosse. So that's why we would be part of the the field administrator is necessary to be able to be a part of that team, to liaison between our our setting. You know, our facility, if there will be Winter kids on there, we would want to make sure that we had that information.
Uh also, this this has right now, we'll ask opposing teams for roster follow-up, up up to four spectators per player. So I I you were saying a home team, or is this everyone's allowed to bring four spectators?
So that's just for the Winter, that's for the Winter people, and for the away people, they can only bring two. We certainly can send a revised, they have to sign a revised contract.
Okay.
So that's the original application.
I just want to make sure that we clear the expectations.
Prior to the game, they have to sign the revised expectation um contract with us.
I think we need two motions on this, one uh to waive uh field use fees to four hundred dollars per day. Uh with the remaining admin and custodial uh fees staying in place. Uh and that all uh renters or users of the field youth sports um follow all the protocols as set by the uh school department uh in the state of Massachusetts.
Oh moved.
First motion, I believe that's already on the floor, we've had discussions, is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, uh can I roll call vote, please, Patty, for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes, I believe we need a second vote to approve the uh Winter Bu- Youth Lacrosse use of the field, I'll accept a motion for that right now.
I'll make a motion to accept the Win- the Winter Bu- Youth Lacrosse use of the field.
Second.
Do I have a second on the uh approval?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope, any discussion on Winter Youth Lacrosse for the application as submitted? Hearing none, Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to general functions and reports, I don't believe we have any further subcommittee reports this evening. Uh superintendent's report.
Yes.
Superintendent Howard, do you have any report for us this evening?
Oh, I do, I do, um it's really gonna be specific to a couple of a couple of small things, and then the most important thing, um which was how today went. So uh some of the uh smaller items, uh less information, light it up blue, I don't know if anybody has driven by any of our schools. Um and seen some of the beautiful work that has been done by staff, students, as well as outside organizations like PTOs and PTAs. Um in donation of uh blue lights for us to light the community up blue, as well as our schools. Uh in honor of recognizing uh individuals with autism, uh and and really bringing to light. Uh the the world of autism and the acceptance of all students um with abilities and disabilities, and. Um it's fascinating to to see, not just here in Winthrop, uh but I drive through Stonem, particularly to see my nephews light it up blue campaign. Uh my brother Brian's son is a twenty-one-year-old young man with autism, um who is just the mayor of Stonem, if anybody knows him. You know, he'll he'll tell you he's the mayor of Stonem. Um it's just such a nice testament to drive through neighborhoods and see people's front porch lights blue, uh in the recognition of the acceptance of all. Um so I'm thrilled to to see that living in our schools and uh in our community and in our neighborhoods. Uh so if you don't have a blue light bulb, um please get one, I believe mine was cracked with the hockey stick at four-thirty yesterday afternoon. So hopefully that has been replaced before I get home today. It was an accident, just throwing it out there. Uh so that's that's good news. Um parents received um from through the school, uh last week, we sent out permission. A permission sheet to parents relative to binax testing, so binax testing is a rapid uh COVID nineteen test. For symptomatic people, and a symptomatic person is defined by the nurses within our buildings, that could be a student, or that could be a staff member. In which we can do a nasal swab and get a very quick result, ten minutes, I believe, uh of a positive or a negative. Uh and it allows us to act, it allows us to do two things, it allows us to uh allow students to stay in school that are uh not positive. And and simply have allergies or asthma or or some other level of um medical condition that's having them cough and and get them right back into the classroom. Or if a student is positive, uh to quickly move them to the COVID uh positive medic- the COVID medical waiting room. In which we are able to then reach out to parents in a very private confidential manner, uh keeping our students calm, calm, you hear COVID medical waiting room and. You know, it scares me just the sound of it, but I can assure you uh that it is a a place that is not scary for our students and is staffed by uh by our either CNAs or nurses. Um and if a student does nasal swab positive, or a staff member does, um they do need to follow that up with a PCR test. Um and not just the nasal swab, um so we sent the permission slip out to parents. Um it is, it's a little bit of feedback from some parents who are concerned that this was required in order for their children to be uh in-person learning. It is not required for you to agree to binax testing in order to be in-person learning or to be uh a a fully remote student. Um we ask that parents consider it, um if you do not provide permission for it, we will not do a nasal swab on your child. Um if you do provide permission and we need to do that, the nurse will contact you to make you aware of that. These tests are then sent uh not- noticed to the state lab, we have to let them know that we've done the test and that we've had a positive, we have to log that information in. Um so parents have been great, it's a Google Doc, they've been filling it out and sending it uh back. And if you haven't sent one back, or you don't recall getting one, certainly call your school, they can send you another one. Or answer any questions that you may have about what happens if I do fill this out, can I can I revoke my permission at any point? Um I think everyone in the community of Winthrop has had their nose swab twenty-five times each, so the kids are used to it. Um and the adults are used to it, and it's uh no different than the drive-through nasal swab uh that we had down at the courts uh for quite some time. So it's exciting to uh have that up and running now, especially since we have a full complement of students in school. Uh next is today, I mean, today was a long-awaited day, it was a long-awaited day for many people. Um certainly for nineteen hundred and seventy-eight uh children under the age of twenty-two. Uh I had the opportunity uh to go to the different schools today at different timeframes, because you can't be in four places at once. Um and I I did get to get into classrooms and see kids learning, I was able to see uh lunch happening, which was. Like an Olympic sport to watch, um and when I say that, I say that, you know, with love and admiration as to what happens during lunch. With seventy kids in a space in which they have to take their masks off, um and remain six feet apart. Uh and eat, some of us balancing food on our laps, but most of us balancing them on a table. Um and it was, it was breathtaking to see. Um I the walkthroughs, I I don't think I can give today the justice it deserves, uh because. The walkthroughs, I don't think I can give today the justice it deserves, because it's really not something somebody can tell you about and you fully understand or grasp what it's like to be a child or a teacher or any school member in a classroom during COVID-19 and during a pandemic. We have single-handedly, and I speak about Winthrop and Winthrop only, as you all are aware, I'm, I'm not a fan of comparing ourselves to other people, but I will do so once in this report. It, it, it's amazing to see what happens within those buildings and what the difference in age of our children in the buildings results in. This isn't something that if you don't walk through it and see it yourself, which I know because of the restrictions we have, is very difficult. I could talk about it for 10 hours and you would never really get the full impact until you see it in motion. The organization of the activities of the day for each building as I walk through in different stages, lunch, transitions to bathrooms, classroom learning, was nothing short of amazing. Students passing in the hallways, kids lining up to sanitize, classroom lessons happening. Everyone was in motion, custodians, secretaries, hall monitors, teachers, nurses, ESPs, lunch staff, recess monitors, teachers and administration. Every single person had a job. It was similar to watching an assembling line in action, but one that was fun, one that was fun and upbeat and energizing. You know, there was a spring in everybody's step, not to say that we didn't have a student or two or a staff member or two that was filled with anxiety. We had something for that, too. So we had our adjustment counselors ready and, and just visually scanning and looking for students who might have had a concern and being able to step right in there and pull that young lady or young man out of the assembly line, spruce them up a little bit and get them back on, on their way. Our kids, you know, just amazing. I think sometimes we forget that although all the adults are doing all these things, we're putting arrows on floors, we're building desks, we're doing lunch lines differently, we're swabbing noses, washing hands and tying masks a little tighter. I think sometimes we lose sight of who we're doing that to, with and for, and it's the children, it's all of our, all of our students, from our pre-K kids right through our high school kids. I have to give a shout out to them, their ability to follow directions, listen to adults, smile, some anxiety, of course, like I said, we'd have to step in, but it's as if they did this for a living. So as adults, we don't tend to flex and, and, and like get ourselves into a situation and just kind of go with the flow as well as kids do. And if it wasn't for the reaction of the kids, I don't know how long one could sustain this. So it was super cool to be in each building and see all of that activity. What I can tell you, it's definitely not the same school environment that most adults remember. I don't know when the last time most adults were in a public school, but the majority of us, I would take a wild guess that it might be when you graduated high school. It's a little bit different. It's also not the same as last year. What it is, though, is a place that I, as a, as an educator now for 33 years, would and do send my own child. And seeing it in motion today, as I've seen it for the last 13 months, but seeing it in motion, knowing that every kid who has the opportunity to be in-school learning is and all of our students who need to remain at home are, and that we are continuing to educate them, I was one proud superintendent and parent and community member today. I want to thank every single member of the Winthrop Public Schools staff. And, and that does not go unnoticed, every member, including our volunteers. I also want to thank our parents for, I sent you a little email Sunday night for, for taking this ride with us. We still got a way to go, feel like I'm kind of on that roller coaster every once in a while. But our, our students, the school committee and the Winthrop Public Schools administration is one, we're one heck of a team. We are one of a select few public schools in the Commonwealth and, you know, don't quiz me on it because I don't have the time to do the quiz, but I can assure you that we are one of a select few, that prior to the commissioner's guidance and directive and timelines, we are one of the few that have students K through 12 full in-person learning as of April 5th. There are folks out there that are transitioning to hybrid for the first time, folks that are getting waivers to do this a little bit later because they need to, and I get that. And there are some schools that haven't entertained high school yet because it's not required. Winthrop Public Schools is in a great place. I ask parents to focus on a few things and I'll remind folks for those who didn't read my email or for those who, it went to their junk email, please, as we move forward, allow and help us to allow your children to stay positive. Nothing is easy, none of this is easy for anybody, but positivity and letting your children know that their teachers are there to support them and are there for them when they need it is super important to us. And the other thing that I feel is really, really important moving forward in order to continue to build the trust of you with us and, and the public school in and of itself, be mindful of what we've accomplished as a community, and that's everybody, teachers, staff, kids, parents, committees, be mindful of what we have, have done. And when in doubt and when you have question, please do not make an assumption of what it is that we've done or where it is that we're going. Pick up the phone and call and ask the questions, the people that can answer you in a way that is factual and supportive, you'll get a much faster and direct answer from employees of the public school that will help put your mind at ease and allow you to continue to trust us while we have your children six hours a day and, in some cases longer, right through June, and we'll pick it up again with summer programming and again in September. What's it gonna look like in September? I have no idea. I really don't, I'm being blatantly honest, I don't know what curveball we're gonna get, I don't know if we're gonna have to wear masks, I don't know what the distancing is gonna be. What I do know is we have a group of people that have become
Seven o'clock.
Very adept at twisting and turning and putting things in place with minimal notice. And I'm very proud of the Winthrop Public Schools for what they've done. My anxiety level today, up until about 8 o'clock, was pretty high. It, it settled down. We had 75 teachers, 75 known teachers in the Winthrop Public Schools that had their second vaccine on Saturday. For anyone who's had two vaccines, such as myself, some people have reactions to shots and some people do not. I can tell you from my experience, I had a reaction to the second shot and it's probably something I'm not gonna sign up to do again in terms of putting myself up for a reaction. I'll always get the COVID shot in the future, but it took me off my feet for a period of time. In getting back to school on April 5th, because that was the goal, we plan in place, if in fact, a large number of our staff were unable to join us on the first day because they were ill. It happens, and I'm sure if you ask around, you'll find somebody that did in fact have a difficult time with the first, the second or both shots. We had, like I said, over 75 people get their second shot. The plan in place was for us to cover classrooms, whether it be with administrators or current on-staff people sort of flexing schedules, depending upon the number. And then we also had a, a plan that was a little bit more difficult to swallow, was if we had a high number and we couldn't cover, what were we gonna do in terms of classrooms if we had to close classrooms or actually close a school due to lack of staffing because people got sick from the second shot? I'm happy to report that all we had to do was cover classes as if that was easy, low key, it was not easy at all, but we had a plan in place to do that. If it wasn't for the relationships that our principals have with the staff and with our teachers' union and, and the positive relationships that they have, I don't know that we would have pulled it off. Our staff covers for each other. We had 20 staff members across the district that were unable to come to school today due to illness, and we covered it internally without hesitation and with success. That's a true testament to how leadership in our school buildings runs and people being willing to do more when needed. So my, my thanks go to the building principals and the entire staff, whether it was a custodian sitting in covering a lunch period or recess or a teacher covering for a colleague. We did not have to cancel a single classroom, and I am grateful for that as I saw a number of schools over the past two weeks that have had to do that due to lack of staffing directly related to staff having to sort of tap out to recover from the COVID shot. So I know that was a, a lot. Anyone who wants to stay on for the next 32 hours, I can tell you about every second I spent today and how amazing it was to see all of our kids happy back in school. Sometimes we saw some tears, but we were able to get through it, and I look forward to the next couple of months as we complete the school year and get ready to start it all over again in September. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I have another meeting, so I have to leave early, but I wanted to thank Superintendent, her staff, the administrators and, and all of the staff for successfully opening the schools today in a safe and efficient manner. That was a, a great job and Town Council and I are very proud of you for getting that done.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, but I have another meeting, I have to get off. Thank you.
Thank you, President Boncory. Okay, moving on to personnel. Superintendent Howard, do you have the appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence?
So no appointments, we have one resignation of an ESP, who took a full-time teaching position in another district, so congratulations for that. No retirements, we are posting that ESP position to fill that particular move from one of our colleagues, and we're also posting substitute cafeteria, kitchen workers. So if you know of anybody who would like to do that, we're always looking for substitute teachers or bathroom monitors. So certainly if that's something you're interested in, continue to reach out to your school principal. We have no leaves of the absence at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Howard. Moving on to new business, we already voted on the budget for 2021, 2022 recommendation. So I'm gonna move on to the memorandum of agreement with the Winthrop School Committee, the Winthrop Teachers Association for Stipendons, Sports, Extracurricular Activities. I'd like to entertain a motion to send it to the Teachers Subcommittee Negotiation Commission, Committee?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell, any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can you roll call vote to bring that back to the Subcommittee?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes, and we can put, we can put a Subcommittee meeting together before our next meeting. I don't see any unfinished business this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Matucci to adjourn, do you have a second? Second by Ms. Barry. Patty, can you roll call vote, please, on the adjournment?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?